Good evening, let's call the meeting to order and. And would you please leave us in the presentations? So we have two birthdays today. And I apologize, I. I should have said director pretty much tonight. But happy birthday. And happy birthday to my very dear friend Danny. Does it get easier?
It's an honor to be celebrated.
Yeah, that's. My friends, exactly. So a couple of things, welcome to the folks online and to all of you here today, just a reminder that. Our board meetings, business meetings are. Recorded. And tomorrow, the meeting will be on our website along with all the other meetings that are archived, so like how that. And then I'd like to ask. Is there any representatives from the news media with us tonight? Online? We'll move on. So we're gonna look at the review of agenda and communications to the board.
Thank you Chair Cotton, I appreciate that, and again, happy birthday to our. Folks tonight, the only review of the agenda is good news since its last publication. Our HR team, including. Assistant Superintendent has been involved with that, has been busy hiring fantastic people, many of you were able to meet some of our new hires, we have some additional hires. Both are represented in on the consent agenda on page eight and nine.
Okay. So before we call for a motion in a second, if anybody in the room is wanting to. Speak to the board during public participation, you need to make sure that you come up. And fill out a card. If you haven't so, and if you're online. Director or superintendent, assistant superintendent, Michelle Neal will handle that part of it, okay? So we're at the consent agenda. I'll need a motion in a second.
I move that we can. I'll second.
Second discussion. Okay, I've asked Danny just to give us the Reader's Digest version on. What is surplus property? Why does it become surplus property and what do we do with a surplus property?
Well, I think that it's.
Why don't you go ahead and make sure the mics on up there, so people online can hear us.
All this technology was wow, it's kind of exciting. So.
So the the surplus. That is generated in the district is. Is the result of either outdated technology, items that get broken. Items that may have once had a reason to be in a classroom but are are not a normal curricular. Equipment these days. When I first came here to this position thirteen years ago, we had an awful lot of overhead projectors that were in surplus. Everybody switched over to projectors now, we have a bunch of projectors that are in surplus because everyone's gone to. Live casting with a TV in the classroom, so we've really come full circle, but. The board always approves our surplus before we dispose of it. It has to be categorized in one of three ways, either it is surplus, we just have excess of it, or it's no longer used, but it's still functional. It is broken and we try to find the best way to dispose of it. Often, we will dispose of broken items through somebody like a metal recycler or through an organization that. Will recycle it through the the waste stream, so we avoid putting it in the dump. But then ultimately, some of those items do have to be thrown into the dump and that's kind of the final resting place for those items. But there are items that are functional and we have. A way of disposing of them that brings some revenue back to the district. So we have used two online auction sources. Public surplus dot com and govdeals dot com, and we really have found the most success with the last organization and last. School year, we disposed of through public auction at competitive auctions. About fifty two thousand dollars worth that we were able to return back into the general fund of the district. So surplus doesn't go to waste, sometimes we'll have an agency or an adjacent school district. Or even a school district someplace else in the state who doesn't have the funds to. Buy classroom equipment and we have some that has passed our useful need for it. They'll even take broken chairs in some places, their their programs don't have the funds to go out and buy new chairs. So we will either for a very small fee sell them to them or we'll just donate them to their organization, so the. Public money remains with the public's trust. So does that kind of cover it for you?
Any questions?
Is there, is there a way where those things are listed so districts might be able to? You know, like a want add sort of thing.
Yeah, that's a very good question, Director. The. The Tracy Graff, our. Physical plant manager, he is a member of an organization that is other physical plant managers across the state. And often in their listserv, he will see. School districts that need something and we'll have that in our surplus and so he'll communicate that way. Sometimes they'll reach out directly to my office in purchasing, or they'll come through the business managers. List serve and they'll be looking for something and so we can accommodate them that way. But all of the items that end end up in public surplus, those websites are easily accessible by anyone. And as long as it's not a district employee that's had any. Hand in the disposal of it. If they can auction, they can bid on it, so I can never bid on anything because I always have my fingers in the. In the surplus stream, but somebody that doesn't have any contact with the surplus. Can bid on it at those websites and you're competing against others, I just recently sold. A batch of Chromebooks. That were in ending up in Chile. So I was sent shipping tags by the buyer and they went to a consolidator in Texas. With an ultimate destination of Chile, so. This equipment doesn't get used just in Oregon or just in the United States, but it gets used globally and we can have some positive impact. On the the global education, so. Thank you, I just hope when I get older that you don't surplus me. Well. You. I will have, we'll have to get permission from your keeper.
Okay, thank you. And I will say, I was, I was happy to see. We have two vehicles nineteen eighty-three, forty years, that's a good length of service and so good to see that.
Yes, yeah, pretty exciting, yes, I very well. Okay, any other questions? Let's call for the vote, all in favor? Okay, did you get the vote?
Yeah.
Okay. You guys are too fast. So this is the time for public participation. Anyone from, do we have any, first of all, do we have any? Sorry, that's.
Is there anyone online who would like to participate in public participation, please use the raise your hand function?
We're done there, so let's move into action, discussion items and superintendent.
All right, every year the board has to consider the approval of the designation of supervisory and confidential employees. And this is part of collective bargaining law, so in your packet on pages twelve and thirteen, you'll find a list of the supervisory. And confidential employees currently in our district for the twenty-two, twenty, for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we're already there. And and we are asking for your approval of these designations.
I move to approve the designation of supervisory confidential employees as proposed.
Second.
Motion in a second. Discussion. Call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next one is approval of the board committees, I think you've all seen. The. Assignments. I didn't hear any. I have few questions that we took care of, but I didn't hear any. Moan and oh, I can't do that, so I think we'll leave it as is unless there's. Absolutely one that you can't serve on. And we did ask. That you send Janet. Just a simple email on if there was a specific. Time that you could not meet or. Or a specific time that worked better for you like mornings or whatever, did you? Get any, any comments? Okay, so we. We can be very flexible. With with this, so we'll look at that and that information will go to the chairmans of that specific committee. And you'll know, okay, it's better for. Two of your three members to meet in the mornings. So we'll get that out maybe this week. We have some committees that we need to start meeting yesterday. And. Gerald will get together with you, AMP has got to get. Needs get rolling, so you guys will need to schedule a meeting. AMP, that's administrative and personnel. And then, and then we'll start, and then I can tell you that bargaining will start. Getting busy here when we get all the, when we're asked to start bargaining, so. We'll be very sensitive to time. And because we want these committees to be successful. And so if we have to meet at five thirty in the morning, I guess we'll meet at five thirty in the morning or whatever works. What, we've done it before? Okay. So I would like, we will need an action item, a motion and a second.
Motion to approve board assignments for standing committees for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
A second.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, let's call for the vote, all in favor? Right, okay, thank you so much. So. Says operations, who's going to be handling the first student, where's the best tool?
I might know something.
Okay.
So I already used my joke about technology, so. I just want to tell you, this app is out of this room. But you can see a couple of posters that were put on either side of the room. These posters are in each one of.
So you can see posters on either side of the room, these posters are at all of the schools. This app is free to parents and it allows them to be notified. When the their student's school bus is approaching their stop. It's not a tracking device, it isn't a RFID that's placed on each child, it's not the chip, it's not anything like that. It's an app that you can opt in for to. And if. If technology works in my favor, I should be able to show it to you, so. Let me see if I can get my screen. And start broadcasting. So there'll be a countdown and then the app that I actually have on my phone, here's my phone screen. You can see. Should come up and you'll see my. My home screen on my phone. Is thinking about it, it's like the vaudeville dog, you know? He's thinking about it. Okay. Well, let's just see, oh, okay. Okay. That's audio. Shops. There it is, okay, I just had to remember where it's at. So you'll see the little. Bright red circle with a stylized F in it, that's first view. And first view is a parent tool that will allow them to add students, they can add all of their students. Or none of their students. And it's unique to our school district. And I hope that I can remember the access code because it would be embarrassing if I got to this point. And I could not. So today it is this P fifty-three U, but first day of school, we will change it. But one of the fun features of this app is that we can push notifications to all of the app holders, so if you've opted in. And your bus is going to be delayed this morning because of snow. We can push a notice out to you for that one bus only. So it's a pretty cool tool in that regard. But if I put my little Tommy in here. And this is as quick as you can do it and you can add a student. And then you can add the routes, so each school has a unique set of routes. Buses that serve that school. So you can go on the list and you know that your student. Arrives on bus ten, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday, Wednesday as well. In the morning and you can configure that particular bus. The bus notification. Is determined by where you put your bus stop, so if it's your daycare provider and you want to know that the bus is picking up your student at the daycare provider. You can use that stop that's at the daycare provider's property. And then when the bus passes in a geofenced area that you select. And it can be from two hundred and fifty feet out to two miles, so if you live way out in the country and you want to know. Because you've got to walk all the way from the house back out to the road. You want to know when the bus is within two miles of that stop, so you can send Johnny out to the stop. You get a notice on your phone that says your bus has just crossed into your geofence. And the bus will arrive at your stop, so for security purposes. It it really is about as secure as. A system as you can develop and still provide access and information to parents. There was another option that we chose not to use where a parent had to get the student's ID number. And that's what they used to set it up, we thought this GPS system that is based. Only on bus routes and based on a geofence was a more secure system. And if we know of somebody that should not have access, I have the ultimate power to disconnect them from the app. And they would not get any more notifications, so. That's kind of an overview, the ten thousand foot level as the satellite starts to come back to earth, are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Parents and training, is there a video that they could watch or a training, because again, when it comes to apps, some people aren't as. Knowledgeable in doing what you just did.
Good question, yes, there are, there are both PowerPoint. There are worksheets like these that work you through step by step. Those are the two main ways, but then. Many people are pretty savvy to to being able to download an app, so we've made it a little easier them to. Easier for them to gain access, down at the bottom of, and I hate to move away from my. That little funny little black queue at the bottom. Yeah, that's. So if you use your camera on your smartphone. And just focus it on that QR code will take you directly to the app, you don't even have to hunt for it on the App Store. It's iPhone and and. What's the other one, Android, thank you. Yes.
Two questions.
Yes.
The first one is, will this cheat sheet be on our website for parents to access?
Yes.
Okay, and then the second question is, this seems pretty new, are there a lot of schools doing this, are we one of the forerunners or kind of? What's the scoop on that?
Well. For Southern Oregon, we're actually number four, so. Coos and North Bend had it before we did, Medford has had it for a while. We piloted it for about three months at three schools last year, but didn't really release any information because. I wanted to find where the pitfalls were going to be, we discovered a couple, but it's pretty seamless. So it's pretty easy for folks to get in, this morning I checked my administrative database. And this morning we had almost two hundred. Parents who have already uploaded the app and are ready to go for first day of school, yes, Director.
I was one of those people, I just wanted to ask, like, we got the email and you QR coded and you get the name and it stops your district code. You're going to hand out the district codes to all parents on day one?
We will, yes, the the we believe that it's important. That the building administrators and the office managers know who are using the app.
So there's going to be one district code for the entire school district or by school?
There will be.
So. Anybody who has access to this district code though can theoretically sign up and track a bus wherever they send it to.
There, there are several steps as you probably have discovered, I mean, you have to. Identify a student and it can be anybody, it can be Tommy Tester, you can put any name in there.
Right.
So.
But that's what I'm saying, you can just pick a bus route and you can track that bus as long as you have the district code. You get, you get access to our bus routes.
You get access to the one route that you. Each one that you punch in and. There is something else on here that you will discover, you build a time window for that stop. Because many of our buses transit through the neighborhood in multiple directions to pick up all students. So you don't want to be notified every time the bus is at a cross street. So you, within three or four minutes of your stop time or maybe up to seven or eight minutes of your stop time. You're going to want to put that window when you're going to want notification and you're going to put that in for your specific student.
Was there an option in there to make it more specific for? Like a layer of security that you have to have, like you said, you say a student ID in order to be able to access it because. That's my one concern is if all you need is a district code, anybody. Who gets that email that says here's a QR code to sign up and. Pick a bus and it might not be who we want to have access to the bus route.
You're, you're right, you're right. And and we really talked seriously about it in the last couple of days because. One of our schools, very excited about the the app. Published our district code on their social media site. So I have the ability to regenerate a code at any time. So that that is what we will do, we will generate, regenerate it, we'll send a push message message out. If you want the district code, you need to go see. The school to get that district code, so that's why the school is involved, so when you go into the office, the. Office manager or the principal knows that you have students in that school and you have a reason to have that that code. It's sort of like the same parallel system with Raptor. Where you have to provide some identification to be able to get into the building.
Yeah, I mean, once the code is out there, I mean, like you said, somebody's going to share it on social media, if I walk to the office and get it and I put it on my Facebook, everybody in town is going to have. The district code on day two, it just seems like, that's, that's my one concern, I'm excited for the app, I. Wait for my kid, I've been down there for half an hour, morning and night, most days, and so this is going to save a lot of time, I'm just a little worried about. Like I said, it being used for the wrong reasons and that making us. You know, I would like it better if it had a layer of security, like you said, if you had to have. A student ID number or something as specific that wouldn't allow anybody without a student to access it, but. That's just my concern.
Yes, go ahead. Two questions. Who paid for this and how much was it? It was free. The, it's part of our contract with First Student, it's an app that they developed and it was something that they provide to districts. Who asked for it, we didn't know about it, it accidentally, we accidentally became aware of it and we asked and they said, yeah, we can get that set up for you, so. This has, this started about March or April of last year, or so of this year. Thank you for, ma'am, so I do, I have a concern too. So I know this never happens, but we have a guardianship battle. We got mom and dad or. Right, and you don't want the child. To. But dad or who, I shouldn't be picking on dads, but you, you don't want somebody. Picking that child up, well, if if we are going this route and with not a heavier security. He or she can go on and say, oh. For dropping my. Genuinely, the bus is a few minutes late, but now I know it's on time, see where I'm going with this?
I do.
I. I just want our kids to be safe. And and I know we, and and when it comes to safe. That's every child. Every day, every time, I don't care, so. I wish maybe you would reconsider. Reconsider that, I don't know. I would sleep maybe a little better at night knowing. Well, Ron, you know, I share those same kids, and so this is extremely important to me. But you all are aware or should be aware that we've published all of our bus routes on our website. For at least the past twelve years. That that I've.
This is different. It has, this has.
I'm assuming minute to minute during that bus stop is going to be. Only in the geofence area. I get, I get that, so that is a little bit different than. Putting out the bus stop times and pickup times and so this is a little bit, it's just a concern, but you know.
What was the downside of having a student ID, you said you thought about it, if you've considered having.
Yeah, it 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 reveals the student's actual ID information. And so.
Which incorporates.
What? Yeah, just name and student ID, so. But.
Is there any sort of option to switch, have a password? You know, like the parent chooses a password.
You know, I don't, I don't know, I can, I can investigate that.
Okay.
Yeah.
My only other question, obviously the hardware on the receiving end of the information is everybody's phone. Right, what's, is there hardware on the bus, like how, how is that?
No, well. Let me correct myself, there is hardware on the bus, but it's GPS. It's GPS tracking that they already have installed on the bus, it's part of their bus. Maintenance and telemetry equipment that each bus.
So the software is just tapping into the.
So. I guess I can give you an example, the the National Forest Service. They still publish maps, but they encourage you to go to the app and I think it's a Vino or a Ben. Aveno is the vendor that provides the maps. I was earlier this summer in Northern California, completely out of cellphone range, but when I opened up the National Forest Service map. I could actually track myself on the ground in real time as I walked. Using mobile positioning satellite information to my phone, even though my cellphone wouldn't pick up a cell signal. And that's the kind of information that that this uses, it uses GPS. It does have a cellphone component and maybe if I, if I share that side of it. You'll feel a little bit, little bit more comfortable about the safety of it. The cellphone side does track the bus or it shows a map of a bus moving across the ground. But it's ten to fifteen seconds behind the actual time and so anybody that was. A narrative well who was going to try something. Dangerous. Is not going to have real time if they're using that map. The the other situation is. Our bus drivers over the last eight years that I've been involved with transportation. Over the last eight years that I've been involved with transportation. Have called to the attention of law enforcement, at least a dozen incidents. Where they've been paying attention as they approach the bus stop, see something that they believed to be inappropriate. Call dispatch who then calls law. To come to the site. So, uh, a couple of years ago, there was, um. An active shooter in the Mill Pine area. You maybe remember this from the news. It was one of our school bus drivers who. Contacted law enforcement to let them know that that was happening. And our drivers chose an alternate route. To get part of the students home, but the students that lived in that neighborhood, they kept on the bus and returned back to school. So our drivers are also a component in this that. You don't have, you haven't calculated yet. Let me investigate on the board's behalf, uh, some of the questions that you've asked. Because we have a very quick hotline directly to. The folks that have done.
Yeah, if they have an option, I mean, I think what would make me feel safer is. Like the parent be. You be the other one.
Yes.
Right? We have to log in and the school has to give access to a person and they have to have shown some sort of credentials that they're, they have a student in the district. If you had to pass that sort of barrier, then everyone can have access that passes that set of criteria, but I feel like if there's. Ability for abuse, if it's just open to everyone, and I don't know if that would put us in a more liable situation if something happened down the line. I mean, I. I think there could argue there's a difference between posting bus routes between a certain time and then also real time updating geo-locations of said buses might. I don't know, I'm sure First Student has done research on this, but it would be interesting to find out if. They went down that avenue with lawyers and whatnot.
Yeah, no, great, great, uh, great comment. I was notified by, um. ODE pupil transportation that the state is now hosting. A product. Very much like this. So we'll, we can check into that side too and see what they've got as far as security for their.
Well, well, I always, first of all.
More board member. And he's, 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 uh, he was a great board member. I enjoyed serving with him, but I can tell he's very, um. Responsive to questions to answer and he's done a great job for the district. So thank you so much. Happy birthday.
Okay, so.
Oh. I just don't remember turning that microphone on. So, um. We're gonna take. A one-minute break. We have some handouts because I, I, I'm still trying to get used to the agenda and my notes, two pages. And you know, I don't like notes. So, uh, we're taking a minute break here to have some things passed out to us.
Yeah, yeah. Happy birthday. Thank you. Go find some brand here.
Okay. Nice seeing you.
You got one?
Yeah. Everybody has their packet. We'll wait, we'll wait for Howard to come right back. I'm still getting used to two. It's a block. It's a man can block. Okay. You ready? It's all yours.
I'm gonna just go.
Yep.
All right. Okay. So next we have, um, the Assistant Superintendent and HR updates. You should have a copy of the slide deck in front of you. I'm gonna start with. Um, our strategic plan, um, with our administrators in all the meetings that we are having this year. We are leading with the strategic plan. As well as with our new teachers. And our new classified staff as well. Um, our goal is that all staff in the district are familiar with the strategic plan. And as it guides all the decisions that we are making in the district. Wanted to give you some updates on our district instructional focus as well as the work that Dr. Weber and I have been doing with our principals. This information was shared with all of our principals at our leadership team meeting at the beginning of this month. And all of our principals were asked to share this information with our teachers as well. And this is our instructional focus as a district for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Our priorities are literacy, math and graduation with care and support. With a focus on high-quality instruction, strengthening the core and improving outcomes for our students. The guiding structures and frameworks that we are using for this work are our strategic, strategic plan, which is the care, instruction and support. That leads to graduation with a plan for all of our students for their most successful futures. Our instructional framework with those of you that have been on the board with us, that's our five D instructional framework. Those of you new to the board, you will be learning about this throughout the year. And we will continue to share more information with you around our instructional focus as a district and how we are supporting our teachers in our classroom. We also are using instructional leadership framework. You will hear that being called the four D. This, this is the rubric that we will be using with our principals. On guiding them to be better instructional leaders and supporting their students and teachers in their buildings. And then we also have the castle framework, which is the social emotional learning framework. That is also the framework that is being used by ODE now to support social emotional learning in our schools. And we will continue to share this information with you throughout the year. To know what these things are. So I didn't bring you every single piece of paper today because we'll go more in-depth as we go through. But I want you to be familiar that these are our guiding structures and frameworks that we are using as a district. Um, those of you that were on the board last year heard about our integrated guidance. Which is the plan that we have to turn into the Department of Education. Where they combined our high school success, um, measure ninety-eight, which is the same thing. Um, SIA, our Perkins Grant, about six different grants were combined together. This is our district improvement plan. And in there are our strategies and outcomes that we are focusing on a district as a district, which are tied to our strategic plan. Around care, support and instruction for our students. And, and then all of our employees need to be familiar with our strategic plan, our instructional focus and those outcomes that we are looking for. As a district. All of this information was shared with our principals. Um, as I said this week, they were sharing it with their teachers and staff. And we will continue to work on it throughout the year. Dr. Weber and I met with, um, all of our building principals. To discuss expectations, to go over this instructional focus again. Um, and to review the school improvement plan template, which was in your board packet, a school improvement and plan template. And as well as, um, to talk about their school goals. So in that school improvement plan, they need to be setting three goals, um, an ELA literacy goal. A math goal. And a building identified goal that can be around attendance. It can be around caring connection. It's something that the building working together has identified that they want to work on. They also have to have an instructional framework focus and then identify the strategies and the action steps that they are taking. To complete each one of those goals. So it's written as a theory of action. If we do this, then this will happen. And our students will improve. Um, for each one of the goals. And then they have to have the measures in place and identify, to identify if the plan is working. So what data are they gonna be looking at? Because this plan is written at the beginning of the year, but it's not tucked away somewhere. This is a working document. That you continue to revisit as a school to see if you are meeting those goals and working towards the, the outcomes. And then it also identifies the person or the team responsible to get the work done. Who in the building is going to be working on those strategies to achieve those outcomes for our students. Now, in each of our board meetings, when we are in a school, and then there will also be a couple of work sessions as well. Each one of those meetings, one of our principals will be sharing with you. So they will be doing a presentation. All of our principals will have the opportunity to share about their school this year. In those meetings, what you can expect to hear is the demographics of the school. The data about the school, what their three goals are. And how those goals will be accomplished in that school to give you an opportunity to hear about each one of them and what we are working towards around. Literacy, math, um, and also those building goals. Are there any questions about this school improvement plan or our district focus?
It seems like these, um, when they're completed, they will really give us some data. To really see how well we're doing. As, as a district. So I'm excited. I'm a little nervous. Gosh, if I were a principal, this seems like, uh, you know, big happy, but. Um, I think that you, you said that your time with the principals have been. You know, it's gone very well and they're ready to. Handle the job. And, you know, so I think we look forward to hearing and. You know, we're pulling for the best, you know, and you know they can do it.
Thank you. All right. So now I need to give you some HR updates. Um, just to let you know where we are with hiring, um, we have hired forty-five new licensed teachers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Eighteen of those are new to the profession. So brand new teachers. And they will have mentoring provided to them by our district mentors, um, Sherry Good and Carla Heath are our, um, district mentors. And we had our new teacher orientation on August seventeenth. Thank you to the board members who were able to join us. It was great to feel the energy. In the room of the new staff coming to us, um, and just kick off the, the year with them. Um, just as some comparisons, last year we had, um, fifty new licensed hires and twenty-six of those were new to the profession. Um, just to give you an update on openings, we currently have. One. Teacher opening in the district. And that opening, um, is. Filled right now with a long-term substitute that will be starting out the school year. Um, but we are still seeking to fill that position, but we're in a really good place. Um, to only have one. Left to fill. We often start with many more. Um. Long-term subs in that position. And then, um, for our classified staff, we have forty new classified hires. And we've have had one new classified employee orientation that was offered this week on Monday. We'll be doing another one tomorrow. Um, this is something that hasn't been done in quite some time. Also inviting our classified employees to come in for a new employee orientation. So. They feel like they are part of the, the community as well and giving them, sharing them some information and training that they don't always get. So we had, um, about half of them, about twenty that came on Monday and the other half we're expected to see tomorrow. And the other piece I wanted to give you an update, I know, and you had received the information from Superintendent Corden, but we do have an HR specialist vacancy. Um, our HR, one of our HR specialists is leaving to go to another district. And that position was posted yesterday. So we are working diligently to get that position filled. Um, our current HR specialist will be staying with us, um, until September fifteenth to support that transition. Any questions?
Um, so what time tomorrow?
Yes, it's a two o'clock tomorrow in the PDC.
Okay, um, we'll be able to make that one. But, um, the other, um, question is. At the new teacher orientation. There were a lot of. Of the teachers that were coming back to us from this district, or I don't know, one was from Myrtle Creek. Um, is there a number on that? I just saw a, a bunch of hands. It was really exciting to.
I can get you a number. Um, I don't have that number off the top of my head, but I knew, do know we had a lot of either. Graduates of Roseburg or people that have left and that are coming home, um, that are coming back that. That will be working for us. Um, but I'm happy to get that number for you.
Well, it, yeah, you don't have to, but I was just really impressed. There were a lot.
There was a lot.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you.
Hey, Jerry. All right. Thank you very much. I'm gonna share my screen here. It's okay. There you go. All right, a couple of things real quick, uh, even before I get kicked off here, um. I'd just say Director Kremis, I think to the, to, to your point. We have really talented people in our organization. And, um. I think it's important just to, to state, our school district is not a we've got your school district in terms like we're going out and we're trying to penalize anybody. We're a we've got your school district. So I'm super excited. We've got talented principals. They, they, you will really, uh, enjoy hearing from them, learning about what they're doing. And, um, I think that hopefully what you've heard from Michelle and I think over, over the course of this year. Is. I talked, um, last year before the, the, the new board was here. That the conditions that were, are set to really, really take off. And I talked about the physics of like a wing. If you get a plane built right, that wing built right, it will lift. And, um, what hopefully you're saying is we're, we have the condition set to move. And so. I'm excited about that, uh, but we've got talented people and I'm excited for you to get to know them. And I do wanna thank, um, our school teams, our principals, HR. Um, Michelle's been, um. Pinching in there quite a bit too. It's remarkable when we think about vacancies around not just schools around the county and the world. Uh, certainly we've heard about forty weeks around the, the country, just to try to, you know, make sure they can get enough staff working. Um, it's pretty remarkable that we have really no, we are basically about full because before the year starts. And so in that post-COVID world, that's not been our norm over the last couple of years. And I wanna thank everybody involved. We've got lots of people that help in that hiring. So thanks to everybody. Okay, I have a, a relatively short, except for the end of it, presentation tonight. We're gonna talk about legislative updates in a minute, but I wanted to put you to sleep quiet yet. All right. So, uh, hey, guess what? Kids are coming back soon. It's gonna be amazing. We love this time of the year. Best time of the year is honestly where we can get, um, kids back in our building. And, um, particularly for new board members, if you had a, if you have not had a chance. As an adult to be there when kids come back, it is like must-see TV. Uh, it's awesome. It's awesome. It's an awesome responsibility. That you realize we have when you see parents dropping off the most important thing they have. And that level of trust to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure. At a minimum, we're getting their kids back from as good as they give them to us. And ideally it's gonna be better than that, right? Be a little, a little smarter than a little bit more. So with that in mind, school starts the twenty-eighth. Um, and I would encourage you to reach out to, to Janet. Our cabinet team has divided up the buildings we're gonna be visiting. And we will be in every building on the twenty-eighth. Many of us will be in every building, you know. That week, but the whole, we're gonna make sure we flood in to be supportive. Not flooding to see if anything's going wrong, but flooding just to, to be there with people, partly for the enjoyment of it. And the excitement of it, but also just to make sure that we, if there are things we haven't seen, if there's things we're missing, if something needs to be adjusted. Our cabinet team will be meeting after school to make sure we can debrief, what did we see, anything we need to correct? Whether that's operationally or whatever that might be. And so I would encourage board members to join at least on the twenty-eighth if you can. So reach out to Janet. Find someone to go with, be part of that experience. It's really, really enjoyable. Uh, I have enjoyed the superintendent being there, traditionally going with the board, chair, vice chair, getting out to the buildings is important. I think it's really important. For our parents and our community and our staff to see us there. Um, I often tell people you can't lead from your office. You have to lead with people. We're in the people business. So really being there is, is, is really, really fun to see. And the kids are amazing. They're fantastic. Um, but I think. As we think about what we've done to set up a successful year. Um, I wanna go, I wanna make sure that we're getting that return on those investments we make. I do wanna thank the board. I'll talk about this here in just a minute, but, um, kids are going back to safer spots. And some of that construction is still happening. But I do think it's great that we can, uh, take. But I do think it's great that we can uh, take a look and say, you know, are we a little better this year than we were last year? And keeping our kids safe. And that is one of our key priorities to make sure we can keep our kids safe. So if you haven't, if you're not sure who you're gonna go with or what to do, or what things are gonna happen the twentieth, please reach out to Janet and we'll make sure that you have uh, someone to go with. And I, I, I'm positive that will be a, a really fantastic opportunity for you. Um, I want to thank uh, those who were able to make it Monday. Monday was our kickoff with all staff. It's a really, really great opportunity. We really missed this during the COVID years where it's hard. It was, we just couldn't get together. And we did something last year at the fairgrounds and that was wonderful. Um, it's a little less intimate because of sometimes that space, but we were able to all get together. I want to thank um, Chair Cotton, Vice Chair Johnson, uh, they both took um, time in that meeting to talk about what was important to them. And Rod talked about um, a teacher, Dorothy Wilson, that meant a lot to him. Um, Howard talked quite a bit about, about our strategic plan and where we're going there and it was a, it was a really strategic focused, plan-focused, student-focused and staff-focused start to the year. And I really appreciate um, both of you for showing up and being there. And and for those of you who could make it, that was a, it was a real good start to the year. Um, to give you an idea of where we're at with some safety and security projects, um, so we have four current vestibules that are um, being constructed. Were, uh, those are going, uh, I'm not patient and I just admit that, are not going as quickly as I like them to go. Um, I was hopeful the phase one would be done by the time school starts. But the, I know that the contractors, uh, thank Cheryl, who's been heading that and and working with the contractor to make sure this gets done. Um, it's ongoing, phase one is, um, we're going to have disruptions throughout the year with these vestibules because uh, the phase two and three are going to be happening while kids are there. I was hopeful phase one would be buttoned up by the time kids walk in the door. Uh, but we're working with contractors to make sure we can get those done as quickly as we can. Uh, um, we're, um, like, I think I mentioned this last time, we're out for bid on phase two. There'll be three buildings that will be um, uh, out for bid. And then we have three more buildings out for phase three that will happen after that. Um, we will uh, be requesting uh, board approval on moving forward on those contracts as soon as we uh, hear back from uh, our bids. And so at the September thirteenth meeting, we will be seeking board approval on the next phase for vegetable construction. Um, next thing to talk about real quick, I, I did loop the board into this, but it's worth just mentioning for our community tonight again. I have sent messages to all of our parents and patrons. Um, I've sent this to our principals and to our board, just to, uh, last week was a good reminder that um, it gets hot here. And there's smoke. And um, in fact, Monday, on our, on my way to the all-staff event, I get a message from Ben Bentia, principal at Fremont here tonight and saying, hey, Randall Olson, who's uh, uh, Fremont's assistant principal there, they were uh, dealing with uh, an issue with uh, Roseburg Fire and Roseburg Police at Fremont in the morning because the fire suppression system went off and there was alarms going off. And then I'm looking at the weather thinking, can we have kids here? So we're not out of the woods with some of this stuff yet, this time of the year. And I think what's important and I want you to realize tonight is we have a plan for how we're gonna address excessive heat. We have a plan for how we're gonna address excessive or um, high AQI if the air quality index is high. We had, we have precedent around this, but it's a little bit different. So um, I've shared with you the heat illness prevention plan that OSHA has put together. We've developed our own. And um, our plan is we will monitor and kind of work through that process that OSHA lays out. In the event of excessive heat, we will be moving to half-day um, sessions. And I hope we don't have to do half-day sessions, but we want to let our families know that if, if we have to, that way they know, their employers know, our employer, our employers in the county know, this is how we'll have to address this. And again, what's important to realize is we cannot operate in excessive heat, particularly when we go at the heat index, which is a combination between heat and humidity at one oh six. And light work, we cannot provide the rest breaks and care for kids. Um, it's not possible. We tried this last year. We did call um, a half-day audible, kind of the pat manning audible, uh, and it wasn't great because in first didn't did a great job, staff did a great job, but it was like, where's that heat gonna be? And it's really hard to do that to parents and to staff and to kids. And we're gonna be more purposeful about that. Um, the weather is not, uh, it's kind of like snow days. You never exactly know how it's gonna be. But we've got a plan to do that as well as with um, if the AQI is high. We did close two years ago, was last year, it was two years ago, I believe, right? Uh, we had AQI, it's supposed to go to five hundred on my phone. It was like six hundred and something. And uh, we visited a couple of buildings early in the morning and literally it was like smoke in the classroom. We do have air purifiers and some, you know, AQI this week has jumped anywhere from low up to about a hundred and fifty. Uh, we can't have kids, OS double A has some restrictions. When you hit like one fifty-one, it's unhealthy. Kids can't practice outside. We can still do school inside. We do have air purifiers, but if we get to a spot where it's dangerous levels and that won't necessarily be a half-day because you could have smoke in the morning. We'll just monitor, we'll try to be on top of that as we can. And we'll keep our fingers crossed that we don't have um, smoke in our area. Uh, but hopefully if you've seen that, um, ask any questions if you, if you have them, but I, I hope parents and um, staff are appreciative that there's a plan. We're ready to go with the plan. We're ready to implement a plan before we see either excessive heat or excessive smoke. Okay, I want to give you a, and I did a little self-talk before this, that I'm not gonna talk about the legislative process as much as, um, because it's sometimes frustrating. Democracy is fantastic and I love it, but sometimes it's a little messy. But I want to give you a couple of updates. Um, I've run some key bills that passed. Um, I had Janet send out, you should have received it, uh, a list of bills. And there's a number of bills that passed. This was probably the most challenging legislative session. It was a long session. It was probably the most challenging, challenging legislative session I've ever been part of. It was actually really, really um, divisive and the way things ended was really tricky. So there were about three thousand bills that were introduced. Uh, over seven hundred of those bills had impacts on education and a hundred of those bills passed. And it literally passed in a way that I've never quite seen before. It passed things, so there's a sendai date on the twenty-fifth that either you have to get a budget passed and bills passed, or they, they die. And was a chance we'd see no new bills. And so, but the way things happened is, is uh, legislature reconvened right close to the end of the session. And a lot of bills passed quickly. And there were some like amendments that happened and some of these go through like, you know, dash two, dash three, dash four amendments, remake amendments. But many of these bills went through at a rate that didn't allow for um, sufficient conversation to happen. And so what we're now doing is trying to make sense of what passed. Some of the rules have not been written for some of these, but off, but these, many of these bills are in place now. With sometimes, and I'll give you a couple of examples as we go, but sometimes they leave us with questions about what does this exactly mean for our schools? So I want to talk about four of these tonight. There's uh, there are many more than four that are going to impact us, but I want to talk about four. I want to talk about the early literacy. Um, success initiative, it's House Bill thirty-one ninety-eight. Talk about abbreviated day. This has been a hotly contested and very polarizing um, bill, Senate Bill eight nineteen. Uh, the workforce uh, uh, package, uh, which is SB two eighty-three. And then end with uh, a House Bill twenty-seven fifty-three that is, will directly impact the board in terms of some decisions going forward. So I, I won't read this to you, but um, there has been um, data for many years that supports the importance, the critical importance of making sure kids can read by third grade. In fact, um, there have been states that have planned bonds for prisons based on third grade reading scores. And I'll tell you what, one state in particular has been, it's been their most accurate measure for how many prison beds should be developed in the state. It's immoral in some ways. And it's, it's a, that's a huge issue. And yet it continues to be a marker for success in high school and post-high school. And kind of the reason for that in a way, and this isn't totally accurate, but in some ways, the early literacy work we do is really about phonics and it's about fluency and accuracy and comprehension in the process of reading acquisition. It's how to read. Where we know our later years are about really using reading as a mechanism to speed up thinking. And so kind of the, the, the early literacy work is really important because you're kind of learning to read and you're reading to learn afterward. So um, I actually was involved in the legislative concept of this bill. The governor, when Governor Kotek came on board, this was a key party of hers. It looked like there was initial investment of three hundred million dollars into this. It's, it weighed down to nine hundred or to ninety million dollars and districts will have to match that. It's a non-competitive grant. Um, the application for this isn't even out yet. It comes out in October and we don't believe we'll see the funds until probably about March. Uh, we do have district allocations. Our district is um, will be allocated. We will um, submit a grant for this. And we will receive a grant for this somewhere in the neighborhood, about four hundred to four hundred fifty thousand dollars for our school district. Where we see um, value in this is really in the the focus on speeding up our, our work around our literacy. We have an literacy framework. One of the things we'll have to, the board should be aware of is um, they've built this as kind of the science of reading. And that sometimes generates a lot of anxiety for elementary teachers because there's a lot of philosophical disagreements or phil- philosophical approaches to reading. Some are very heavy based in phonics. Some are very based in just give kids books and they can read. What I feel comfortable here and what's important for the board to realize is we'll have some additional assets. It fits exactly with what we're doing in terms of increasing our literacy outcomes for kids. And we have the framework. In fact, we shared the framework with the state on if they want this to work well, they actually asked what we're doing. And we shared our literacy framework with the state. The state has developed their own literacy framework. And I'll have to show you what I sent them and what they, what they did. It's very similar to what we put together, which is fantastic. I feel good about where the state could be there. We really want to help our early readers read. And this is a bill that will, I believe, help us do this. Um, and will help really further the goals around our literacy. So that was good news. Senate Bill eight nineteen um, is a complicated bill. Um, the intent of the bill is that all students deserve the right to go to school in a full day. Um, and so um, essentially, uh, in, in the past, what has happened before Senate Bill eight nineteen, there's federal law that, that also supports this, is that an IEP team, if a student is on an individualized education plan and receives additional support through the opposite services or has a five oh four, plans are made with a team to determine how to best support a student. Oftentimes, um, team decisions are made to reduce a student's day. Um, it's not always what we think. It's not always because maybe a student can't be successful in a full day, but it could be for therapeutic reasons. It could be for a variety of reasons that, that the team can decide that, you know, a reduced day may be best for this individual student. The change that uh, went into effect July thirteenth is that uh, no student is afforded an abbreviated day. Unless the parent provides consent that they want the abbreviated day. There's also a reporting mechanism, uh, a superintendent will have to file a report every thirty days or so to show kids are on track for graduation. This was a very, very intense bill. Um, there are many things that are kind of undetermined. I'll give you an example. There was a, in the language, the bill specifically calls out virtual charter schools as being exempt from Senate Bill eight nineteen. So virtual charters, even though there's, so there's um, they don't, it doesn't, they're exempt from this law. But if you have like Roseburg Virtual Schools, a public school, you're not exempt from this. It's just was a language thing. So we're having to kind of figure some things out. The great thing is Melissa's done a fantastic job and opposite services being way ahead of this bill. She was on the front end of this. Well, with, as this was talked about in session, uh, her and I met a variety of times. She's done a fantastic job. There was a lot of work that needed to happen. And we're way ahead of the curve on this. Um, and so really want to thank Melissa and her team for, for being ahead of this. Um, there'll be some conversations with um, both internally and with parents on how to make this work for students. Um, we really want to make sure um, that care, support and instruction and graduation isn't negatively impacted by the bill, but that the bill supports that work moving forward. So that's, if you hear about eight nineteen, we're ahead of the curve on that. Uh, we've, uh, there's been a lot of um, documentation and paperwork that Up Student Services has done and communicating with principals and, and um, parents. And so we're ahead of the curve on that and, and doing quite well on that. Alright, here's a bill just to, and I kind of put this in here because it's kind of what happens. This is a pork-barreled bill. Uh, so this is a bill where a whole bunch of stuff went in. And so you have these bills sometimes where you have people present a bill and someone signs on and they just start dumping things into this bill. I think what's important to realize is you'll hear about this bill because there were some really important things that happened in this bill. Um, uh, classified, there were some classified employee protections that went into this bill around um, um, dismissals that have to only involve just cause. Really important. We're working with association on that right now. And that's something we're working on MOU and um, there were some, um, there were some recommendations on um, providing additional funding for certain positions like within special education of providing extra stipends. However, there really was no money to do any of this. And so this bill has a lot of recommendations. Uh, there, there was um, a grant that's gonna go to ODE around crisis intervention. But if you hear about Senate Bill two eighty-three, it has a lot of things in it. So I'll give you one example. Um, superintendents were getting fired a couple of years ago. It was, it was a, a thing around the country and around the state. And so the previous governor passed a bill that, that basically provided protections for superintendents in case they get fired. So it was like, you have to pay them out for a year. And that was a, a bill that did pass last year. Well, superintendents of ESDs weren't included in the language in this. And so in this bill, they threw that in as well. It's kind of this bill where a lot of things went in there. I think what's important is we're working through um, adjusting some of the things we're doing as related to this bill, but is a good example of a bill that has a lot of asks of the district, but no funding to do the work for industry. So we're kind of working through those things. Okay, um, I'll give you one more, one more tonight and then I'll be done here. And this is one that um, you might perk up with a little bit because it's gonna, it does impact school boards across our state. So in the past, um, there was uh, language that, that prohibited board members from getting paid. It was a volunteer position, um, and, and still is a volunteer position. Um, the uh, the House passed a bill, House Bill seven or twenty-seven fifty-three that allows boards to be, to receive a stipend up to five hundred dollars. Um, it, this is in addition to any reimbursements the board might receive. So I had the pleasure with um, Andrew and Steve to go up to the OSBA conference. It was great. It was really good learning for three days. And we have a budget to support things like mileage, meal reimbursement, hotels and the conference registration. We have that. Those are standard things that we do to reimburse um, board members for. This is would be an additional up to five hundred dollars a month. It's very vague. There was no additional funding for this. Um, and so I think as a board and I'll kind of lean on um, Chair Cotton and Vice Chair Johnson to kind of work through this. It is, it is a conversation that we're gonna have to have as a, the board will have to have an open session, a discussion about this. Um, what's a little bit interesting about this is that the, the bill's very specific, it's very clear that certain board, you don't have to choose it. Um, it's an up to five hundred, so that could mean anything in the range from, I guess, a dollar to five hundred dollars. Um, and I think we'll see across uh, the state. Um, maybe board members on the same board that maybe choose some and some not to. And so um, this is a good example of uh, how that legislative process works. And sometimes it's not something you're asking for. But sometimes that comes to us and we now need to figure out, so what are we gonna do with this? And this is one that um, the school dish, uh, the school board will have to, uh, will lean on our chair and vice chair to kind of run that process. And that um, might be a, a good work session topic um, in the future. So uh, with that, happy to host any questions and um, I hope you have um, appreciated the update. If you have questions about other bills, and I've received some questions from board members about other bills, please feel free to reach out. I'm not a legal expert, um, but can find the answers that you need hopefully. Yes.
From the um, abbreviated days.
Yes.
How many students do we?
How many students do we now have on abbreviated days?
Very good question, Director. So as of today, we have approximately 786 students that are on IEPs around the district. We have seven students that are on abbreviated day on IEPs. We're working on that to bring that down. We have seven students at our virtual school, Roseburg Virtual School that are on IEPs. So that takes it to 14. And we currently have one student that we've accounted for that's on a 504 and abbreviated day. The state wants us to be at 1.9% or fewer. So a district for our size for IEPs only, that would be nine or fewer students. With the new law, though, it added our students at our virtual setting.
Yeah.
Was it in reading that bill is, as long as the parents are okay with the abbreviated day? Or still that doesn't matter?
So that's always actually been part of the law. We could never make a unilateral decision. But this law is adding some extra accountability pieces. So any student that's on an abbreviated day, starting this school year, within the first 30 days of the school year, we must meet with the parent. We need to inform the parent of their right for a full day program every time we meet. The parent can waive and then we can meet every 90 days. But it is not to be any less than 25 days, any more than 35 days throughout the school year. But at any time, the parent can revoke the 504 or the abbreviated day, and then the school district has five school days to respond to get that student on a full day program. There is an extension for an additional five days. So we would have up to 10 days to get the student in a full day program should the parent revoke at any time.
Are you anticipating trouble with that?
So we're communicating with the parents. As soon as the law came in effect in July, we, within two weeks of that, sent notice to all of the parents of students who ended the school year on an abbreviated day or who were in on an abbreviated day for more than 30 consecutive days, informing them of their new rights and of the law. We're also in the process of getting a packet together for all of our district employees to be able to share with parents the law in parent language, also their rights, bringing the eight-page law down to a reasonable piece. It also has 11 sections. So we're trying to get that all readable and workable for our staff and for our parents and for our community to understand.
Thank you. That's a big ask. Any further discussions there?
Thank you.
I really appreciate.
We, we talked about being updated on legislative items and I really appreciate it. I'm just not going to bring, the board sure has a responsibility of adding things on the agenda. I'm just not going to bring this stipend thing. I just think it's just my opinion. I didn't get on the board to make a dollar. So just, that's where I'm at. We'll have a discussion further, but you guys know where I'm at. I just, I just think it's because the money would come out of general fund, which affects its money. It's, you know, it's 47,000, I think I got 4000 for the year, but that's $40,000 I'd rather spend on kids. So anyway, it's just where I'm at. Okay. So the next thing is Director reports, our Board of Education reports. I want to read this because I, I think this is important. This is your opportunity to share your experiences and insights with your fellow board members in our community. And thank you as always for your dedication and willingness to contribute to the forward momentum of Roseburg Public Schools. I think that's, I think that's real important. Janet or whoever wrote that for me. Thank you. So I'm not sure if you two worked out, but this will be the time I'm going to call on Director Minor first. And then we'll go to Steve. You guys have your reports, but then share with us information on the conference you went to.
Yeah. So this was of course my first OSBA conference and it was the smaller conference, had about 250 in attendance and, but it, it was great. One, I, I could talk for a long time about what I learned. So I'm really trying to just not steal Steve's thunder as well, but one of the things that I really learned is how well Roseburg School District is doing. Because they were saying, oh, you need to have a strategic plan. You need to do this. You needed this. And it was like, wow, this is great. We're already there. We're already there. And it was, it was great to be able to network with other board members and get some insight on some things. And it really made me feel good about being on this board and that we really are going places. This is going to be great. I'm excited. One of the things I went to, one of the workshops was parliamentary procedure, which I know, but boy, I realized I didn't know. So I am, I, Steve and I both, we brought back this little cheat sheet just for each of the board members on school board speaking guide on one side and essential motions for boards on the other side. So that's a nice little thing to have at your fingertips. The other thing keynote speaker was Dr. John Hodge and he wrote the book, You Can Get In The Way. And it, it was, he was a great speaker. So read his book and the thing that I really, I guess I wanted to say is dovetailing with what the director spoke of and Jared on, on the, the day of our all-staff day. And that is the importance of one person. If you want a really good motivational book, this is great, but he has some wonderful stories, but just how the words of one person, whether it be a teacher or a janitor or whatever, that will just see that child and believe in that child and speak words of affirmation, giving them a hope, giving them a future, that it does make a difference. And to just be cognizant of that, just in my own life is really important. Just, you know, my neighbors on the street, you know, the kids on the street and just how I speak to my grandchildren. It is so important and makes a big difference. And, and I think we do that well, but I'm looking forward to us doing it even more. So thank you. Thank you for that opportunity.
Yeah, I want to thank Jared for, for being out there. It was pretty awesome to have, you know, the cohesive unit of us together out there. The first day we were just doing mostly core trainings and then we got to select on the second day, which in the third day, which trainings we wanted to go to. Yeah, I, I mean, I could go on like, like Andrea said for a while about what we learned out there, but what I really learned is the same as, as she learned that we have a really strong cohesive board. We have a really great superintendent. There are a lot of communities in Oregon, a lot of school districts in Oregon that don't have that. And they're going through like straight trauma. And it's pretty insane. And I, one of the things that, that I, that kind of kept propagating was the, the pre, the pre-COVID board members and then the newbies like us that didn't, you know, we, we kind of all went through COVID together as a society, but the school board people kind of got a special dose of it. And so really it's on us to understand what we don't understand and to reach across the table and have those conversations, whether it be with administration or fellow board members. It's, it's really something where there's going to be a gap in knowledge that you can't really explain. So another real useful thing that I, I got from the training was just kind of how to understand how the purpose of policy and that we run as an organization based on our policies. And so there's going to be situations where there's going to be a human talking to another human. And it needs to direct, the conversation needs to be directed into what's the policy on this? And if the policy is inaccurate or the policy needs to change, then the conversation goes down that road and it kind of relieves this tension that seems to happen between the community all the way to teacher, principal, super, school board. So I think I'm rambling at this point, but it was great. It was really great. And I, after attending that conference, I want to attend everyone.
And?
I'm just excited for having been in the orientation for the, just for the whole staff. I think we've set a really good precedent to let the staff know that this board is really supportive of you. And, and you're critical to our students. So we support you as you support them. And so just seeing that, feeling the camaraderie of, of working together as a team and, and I hope that you'll trust us and, and that we we've entrusted, you know, our confidence in you and you're doing a good job and we trust that you'll continue that. So yeah, it was just a, a good beginning of the year for us.
I just want to say that on a very personal level, I'm so excited to get these kiddos back into school.
Your experience at that conference, I'm, I'm kicking myself for not going to it. And I'm going to be asking you guys out for coffee to find out more about what you, what you learned. But other than that, you know, I'm excited. I'm excited to meet the principals. I was a teacher for quite a few years and, and I've known a lot of principals over my career and I'm looking forward to getting to know you guys.
Very much. I have nothing I had that will benefit the students. So I too enjoyed the new employee orientation. That's a lot of fun. We're getting a dynamite teachers and staff coming in, but one particular that come from Southern. And she worked for me 38 years ago and that's where she met her husband at one of our McDonald's. That was kind of fun. Great teacher. And then at the all-staff on Monday, I was talking to a librarian. Heidi. And she worked for me 40 years ago. So it's just crazy how, but and a lot of other ones. So it's, it's pretty touching. So before we do a recess, Ben, you're, our next meeting is at your school on the 13th, right? And so just make sure your house is clean because we're coming, coming for a tour at 4:45. We'll tour. Okay. And we will pray for you too and then make sure that's them, but we're looking forward to it. We really are. I think, I think the board members will really hope you can be there at 4:45. And we'll remind the meetings when we're at onsite. I think you will really enjoy the tours. Really, it's just a whole different, and they need to go to the boiler room. Especially when it's like 110, right? So anyway, we look forward to that. So we're going to do something different. We're going to call a recess of this meeting and we're going to, when we do that, it's generally to go into an executive session. But we have decided that we will, and then we asked the folks to leave and that's really not hostile. That's, you know, really being it's not like inviting company in. Believe so. I can tell you tonight, there will be no action items after executive session, but we will come back in here and adjourn the regular session, but we're going to move executives, executive sessions into the conference rooms, a conference room. And so whenever there's an action item to be taken back if there is, then folks are welcome to stay in this room instead of going out to their car or whatever they do. We, I don't know why we didn't do that years, years ago. Well, I know why we're doing it. I won't say why it's happening, but that's why. So we're not going to ask you to leave if you don't want to, but there won't be anything. We won't be covering anything. So we are going to be going into executive session 1926602F. So at this time, I'm going to adjourn into recess this board meeting and in five minutes, we will meet in the conference room for executive session. Thank you all very, very much for coming. Appreciate it.